Yes, I am.
Okay.
Starting on historic again.
Back to sixty-four? Okay.
What soup did you bring?
There's vegan corn chowder and chicken vegetable.
Both are there.
There for the taking. They're a little cooked down.
Where's your soup, Mike? You want one more?
I had dinner with him, could take one home.
Okay, it'll appetize me.
Okay, so let me start chapter sixty-four. Okay, the first thing that I see is the definition of demolish. Dave, you said you don't have a problem with it, but you have a problem with the specifics of regarding demolition in the chapter. So you're, the definition as is is okay?
Yeah.
You just need, you just need to add something in the chapter. Okay.
So there's two things that I'll just throw out there to consider and special order or maybe as we go along or maybe now it's the police added. But one is, is the purview of the HDRB. So I have the, I don't think there's anything in there, or well, it's not. What I'd like to get in there is that they stay the hell out of buildings. But, so it's like the purview of the HDRB is limited to the exterior property or buildings, whatever the wording is. And we have now, I think, visible from public right of way. And, you know, we can use that. Or we could use streets, which is used another. I'm just, it just like, it should be somewhere where this is there, it's explicit, unless it is somewhere in there. So if we're going along, we can keep going and I won't, I don't wanna linger on that. But I think we, I'd like to see that somewhere where it's.
I think there are twenty places in the chapter where it says that they only look at exterior. So for example, in, and I'm trying to find what the number is here. If you look at, um, definitions, as used in this, B.
What is it?
Sorry.
Usage and definitions.
Hmm.
Enter B. Number, number one says exterior architectural features. Number two alteration, it changes the exterior appearance, so.
Oh, sorry, they, so B one under it.
Just looking at where they, where the chapter identifies what the HDRB looks at. The word exterior or external is throughout the chapter.
But is there anywhere it says where that's where they're limited to? I mean, yes, they're looking at this or the, you know, the exterior of this or the exterior of that. But is there anywhere where it says that their purview, they're limited to the exteriors of buildings in the historic district? That can be seen from the public right of way.
There is no sentence that states it that way.
So do you think?
That's the way they describe themselves though.
Yeah, that's the way.
That's the way they say it.
It should be.
And I think that should be clear, like, I think at the get-go.
So in sixty-four four, where it talks about the architectural and historic district review board, we could add something in there. The effect and purposes of this chapter, the board created by.
Or you could do it in public policy, which is in.
Or both.
Sixty-four one. Yeah, that's, that's where I was looking to. It seems like it would be good to start the whole thing off with. You know, since the chapter is purpose, you know, it makes sense that.
So where would it go?
Somewhere in there.
Tell me if I'm flipping too fast.
Okay. You know, in the last sentence of sixty-four dash one A, it says, accordingly, the mayor and board of trustees thereby created an architectural and historic. And here.
Power to review.
District and hereby establish architectural and historic review board with power to review all changes.
In the exterior, it already says in the exterior.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
It's right there in sixty-four one A.
Okay, so that's, that's basically what we need. So it is there, that's what their power is to review changes in the exterior architectural features of improvements located in the district. So that's, that's what you're looking for, Dave.
But it doesn't have the other part as viewed from the right of way or.
Yeah, well, that's, that basically, I think goes on later on.
Well, maybe it should say it.
So you're talking the last sentence in A.
In A, yep.
But that once again does, says changes in the exterior, but doesn't say anything about.
Architectural improvements.
Nothing, it doesn't say it's limited to that.
Well, we can add the word. With power to review all changes.
Only to the exterior or something?
Limited to exterior.
The exterior architectural frame. Of improvements.
No, all changes.
Architectural features of improvements located within the district. Review all changes.
And you could just add a clause at the end of that saying, and limited to, to features that are seen from the public right of way.
Does that head, does that, I mean. So for example, the site of the Silver's Palm. The siding that they made him change because it didn't match the front.
Yeah, if you're walking down the street, you're looking in there, you can see it.
You can sort of, yeah, you can sort of see, so they made him change the piece of it.
Soon as they took the buildings apart again, you could totally see it.
Okay, so we'll spread them out.
There's an alley there.
I believe he had also provided the information about the siding on that side of the building. And what was put up did not match what.
No.
Welcome to Jimmy's world.
He took a shot, he ended up paying twice as much to do it.
All right, so what do we wanna?
I think somewhere in that last sentence is fine, but I think it should be limited to the exterior as seen from.
Power to review.
Yeah.
Right of way.
To review all changes.
Now, one of the things that they did and went with, you know, limited view from the right of way was Al said that the house down the sun, down the Campbell property, you could see that from the train tracks. And made them put fences and do this other work, you know, made them do some other work there because that was a public right of way.
The train tracks?
Well, they're in front, they have a parking lot and.
I guess that should be then defined. Okay, let's, let's.
So like, so Jeff was looking at one, he said like Terry Towns said that it was from the streets, but I don't know if that's. I'm, I'm fine with whatever, but it seems like.
From the historic district. Cause the rail, railroad tracks and the parking lot are not part of the historic district, so. Maybe something like that. So if you're in the historic district, right of way. That's good soup.
I would put only instead of specifically.
Okay.
Which one did you get?
The corn?
Yes, okay.
Excellent. Okay, the corn.
It's a little cooked down. It's been sitting in the heater all day.
Well, thank you, cause I can't eat any.
I'm here to watch something, okay. So this should be only. Okay, I just typed something in so everyone will take a look.
Okay.
Doing now it's.
I don't know, the mayor and board of trustees thereby created.
From a public.
From a public, okay. Now Marie, that last part.
Yeah, it's a defined term. Not necessarily in this chapter, but it is a defined term.
Um, the thing is, what I'm worried about is it's in before amended. It should be in because the amended clause.
We made this change, the amended clause is gonna have to change.
Right.
Don't worry about it.
Public and right of way or just right of way?
From a public right of way, lowercase public.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Lowercase r.
Excuse me.
Marie, you and I have to talk about E code because I, she sent me another, and I have to get clear what we wanna do. So I believe she'll be doing some of this, but I wanna make sure that I.
You need to lose the space before A.
Oh, okay.
It seems a little awkward to me with power to review all changes only in the exterior architectural.
Now, all is gone.
I took out all. Power to review changes only in the exterior architectural features of improvements.
Wouldn't it be changes to the exterior?
It could be.
Instead of any?
Yeah, I thought it answered it. To the exterior architectural features.
So that could mean anything from moldings to a porch or anything.
Yeah.
I'm good with that, you guys.
Okay, okay, so let me just.
So how is it that they, well, we'll get to the.
They're gonna hate us anyway.
The other parts. In terms of structural stuff and all that, I got another.
Okay, so it's, it's as is.
I think, I think right of way is not a defined term.
Oh, okay, I thought you said.
No, I, yeah, yeah.
I'll take it up.
Streets.
Okay, so. Power to review changes only to exterior architectural features improvements located. So if it's to exterior features that are not seen from the public right of way, then they don't have any say.
Yeah, that's the way it is now.
That's right.
Okay. Perfect.
Correct.
Okay, so that's.
But do we have to stay within the historic district?
No, I think it's gonna.
So, sorry, it is, it says it. Changes only to exterior architectural features of improvements located within the district.
Right, but viewed from.
As seen from a public right of way. If someone is on the river, that's a public right of way.
That's money.
They can see.
The whole village.
So, yeah.
So that's what happened with them down to.
Okay.
I mean, I feel bad for those people.
They had to have known they were gonna put a ton of money into that. And you always know.
They sure did.
You always know when you're doing construction that it's gonna be twice as much as you ever estimated it was, it's gonna happen less.
I wish, I wish you were my customer.
The second thing, second thing is a, is the demolition thing. I just think that there's something should add it and I'll throw this out here and again, wherever you think. Under no circumstance shall members of the HDRB evaluate interior characteristics or construction. All determinations regarding construction and or demolition shall be the sole responsibility of village engineer. Or engineer hired by the village of calls for you.
I like that.
I like that, I just don't know where to put, it doesn't go with the definition of demolition, but it has to go someplace in, inside. Cause the definition of demolition.
Yeah, it's not, doesn't necessarily have to be that. I don't, I don't want them inside buildings.
No, no, I just wanna, I know inside, I need to.
It's part of the.
We need to find a place to put that.
The hardship thing.
It's gonna even be other than hardship.
It's other than hardship.
Yeah.
The point that Dave is making is the architectural review board, I believe.
Hey, where does, are any, are any police here, by any chance? I'm with the Minnesota State Patrol.
You're far away from home.
I know, ma'am, isn't that crazy? I got a parking ticket out here, I got a, I got a rental with a placard that says I'm, I'm a cop, but I think they might've missed it unfortunately. I can come back during business hours too.
There's somebody on the road, I just don't know. Let me see, I think I, I have.
No worries, I can just deal with it tomorrow too, but I just.
You do have time tomorrow?
If you want.
Yes, ma'am, until Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, stop by tomorrow, they can take care of it.
Okay, thank you, very after meeting, have a good night.
Not a problem. It said police parking, so he parked. Seriously, sir.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
What's that?
It said police parking, so he parked in the police park, he got a ticket, it's. Okay, Steve.
It's a rental car, it threw us off.
Yeah, he had a placard in the window.
I thought it was like a gangster.
So under powers and duties, I think where you, it might be an appropriate place is to put it under powers and duties of the review board.
Okay, that sounds great.
Where's that?
It's sixty-four five A. Sixty-four dash five A, not sixty-four dash five, and then capital A.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I'm there.
Okay, I gotta get that, okay, got it. Okay, general advisory powers of, retain professional, retain employee professional.
Maybe under three somewhere.
I just had another whole point.
Take five, six, seven.
I would think then that it might better be under four, which is review proposed alterations.
Oh, yeah, that is better.
Cause three is more research work. Um, but four.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Four is the work that they, that they, that they, that they do.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna read it out to me again slowly, Dave, I don't remember, I don't type as fast as you can read.
All right, you can change if you'd like. Under no circumstance.
Give us your thoughts first. I mean, under no circumstances.
Under no circumstance shall members of the HDRB evaluate interior characteristics or construction.
Go ahead.
What, what do you want?
So review proposed alterations to designated properties. Review proposed alterations to designated properties from the exterior.
Right.
Right?
From the exterior. Does it, alterations, alterations to the exterior.
Review proposed alterations to designated properties.
Or exterior alterations.
Like exterior alterations.
It, I mean, they're all exterior alterations, that's the only thing they look at is exterior alterations. And they've, point is, they should stay outside, on the outside of the building. They shouldn't go inside the building. So review proposed alterations to designated properties, um, from an, by external review. Or by, um, by evaluating, by performing exterior evaluations. Now, that isn't it. I think that the, under no circumstances shall members, that is something you tell the members.
Yeah, but you don't wanna.
This is not something, I, I don't think that it is appropriate to have the, under no circumstances in the code.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But your point is that they should stay on the outside of the building.
Dave, read the rest of that again.
And also that all determinations regarding construction and demolition shall be sole responsibility or the responsibility of the village engineer.
That, and that's, that's a very, I think it's a new but important.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, uh, element here.
Review proposed alterations.
So review proposed alterations.
To designated properties.
To designated properties.
Review.
From, from an.
Why should we say an external review?
Well, the problem is we got exterior alterations, extra, external review. Review proposed alterations to designated properties. Okay, semicolon, as you have it here. If required. Site visits are restrict, will be restricted to the exterior of the building.
If site visits are required?
If, yes, if site visits are required.
Site TV.
They are restricted to the exterior of the building.
I like that, that's good.
Is that, does that work?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
But what you said about their evaluations of structure and all that stuff, that needs to be in there too because.
They will be.
Yeah.
They will be.
Okay, just another.
So, so this is more as information, not just for the historic district review board, but for people who are having their properties reviewed.
Okay, let me, I sucked this in, but it's in a bad place, so it needs to be moved. Review proposed alterations to design, designated properties. Um, approve or deny certificates, blah, 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 and make determinations. Then if site visits are required, should that be a last sentence?
That, that could be, that could be.
If site visits are required, restricted.
They will be restricted.
They will be restricted.
If site visits are required, they will be restricted to the exterior of the building.
Okay, then Dave, what you said.
The next thing you said.
I think you should use shall instead of will.
Shall be.
Shall be. Dave, back to, um, about the engineers.
Um, yeah, what I had is all determinations regarding construction or demolition. Um, shall be the sole responsibility of the village engineer.
So for there, look at sixty-four dash five, lowercase a, two. Retain or employ professional consultants or other personnel as may be necessary to assist it in carrying out its duties. Except that if a charge is to be incurred for such use, approval shall first be obtained from the mayor and board of trustees. Retain or employ professional consultant. And what you said, Dave, was that, I think there were two points. One is the consultants are, when a consultant is, is, when a consultant's professional opinion is required, that consultant has to be hired by the village. Right? We, we don't want my architect providing to the, a village board.
Right.
My architect's opinion. It is the village's architect's opinion that, that influences the village. Right, so that's one element. The second element is that, that when a cons. When there are matters about, when there are questions about the structure of the building. Is it just limited to structure or is it more than structure?
Say construction and demolition, I don't know. Structure, I guess it would be.
Structural evaluation.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so.
Yeah, that would go over.
Right, so, so Frank, can you throw this in as a new sentence? Structural evaluations, um, shall be, when taking your, structural evaluations shall be performed by a professional consultant hired by the village. That, that's what you wanted, Dave?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
I always suggested shall because, because it mandates.
No, shall be. Shall be is good.
That particular word. Marie, one little word, structural evaluation shall be performed by.
Shall be performed by a professional consultant.
Working on behalf of the village.
Professional consultant, I said hired by the village or working on behalf of the village, um.
This, this speaks to, also to them hitting their spending limit and being allowed to tear something down also. Because, uh, you know, the, the HDRB with the flower shop had determined that indeed the building was structurally unsound and it was okay to do it.
The point that you're making is that it's not the HDRB's purview.
Right.
There may be a qualified structural engineer as a member of the HDRB, but it's the village's structural engineer. Okay, should say that.
In this.
So you gotta say that the, there's, it can't be a member of their board either. It needs to be an independent or?
Yes, but.
Because they're not supposed to be in there doing it.
So P and C, professional and, no. Terms are before this, so professional should be capitalized and consultant should be capitalized.
Okay, um, yeah, so Steve makes a point, if one of their members happens to be a professional engineer.
That's really nice, but they can't do it.
Okay, so we need to sort of, an independence?
Shall be performed, working on behalf of the village, not on behalf of the, of the HDRB. Or change it to say hired by the village. Or employed by the village.
Okay.
Now, what do you?
Go ahead, Mary.
What do, what would you think about making the last sentence here another major bullet point?
I think that's fine. Let me go back and ask something before we move, um, okay. It says in this retain or employ professional consultant, so we're talking about the, the role of the HDRB. As necessary to assist in carrying out its duties, except that if a charge is to be incurred, approval shall first be obtained by the mayor. Now, isn't this in an escrow?
Yes.
Isn't this an escrow charge? Why do we have to approve something that goes, that gets paid by the client?
Well, I, I would think it would be who of us, I've been wanting to use that word, or J.
Jackpot, did you watch Jeopardy tonight?
And I was correct too.
I think it, it is appropriate that the village board agrees that the, the expenditure of funds by the HGB or the ZBA or whomever is an appropriate expense. Not, not necessarily the amount, but do we need?
Does it need it?
Yes.
Well, isn't, is, should that be between the board and the client? I mean, the client's gonna ultimately pay for this.
Yes, uh-huh, well, they can do that too.
So we still have to approve it?
But they're paid for our engineering.
I, what's interesting is, I don't know that we have ever, that any item has ever come before us, asking the, the village board to approve.
Right, and that's, yeah, that was. Yeah, because I think usually it goes planning and the client, you know, we're gonna get an engineer, it's coming out of their escrow account. They don't usually get involved, I mean, we see the bills and we know where, where the money's coming from.
Yeah, we don't usually.
So we don't get, so can we take that out?
Where is it again, sorry?
It's in sixty-four five A, A two, the, this paragraph we're just looking at.
So all, all you would do is take out, accept that if a charge is to be incurred.
Uh, yeah, so, that much. The part that is highlighted, if you guys can see that. Retain or employ professional consultants or other personnel as may be necessary to assist it in carrying out its duties.
Period.
Period, then, except that if a charge is to be incurred, approval shall first be obtained. I don't know why we need that because it's, it's coming out of the escrow account of the client.
Yeah, we can take that out.
Easy, period. Okay, all right. Okay, and then we say structural evaluation shall be performed by professional consultant employed by the village.
Should that be a separate, uh, item number?
I'm looking at each of these. Each of these paragraphs are ending in semicolons and then this one's sort of at the end of a sentence, so is it in the wrong place? Steve, is this bad for you?
Sorry. Can you say, can I?
I'm sorry, each of these paragraphs, one, two, three, are all ending in semicolons. And then this one is a sentence ending in a period, so it seems like it sort of doesn't belong here.
It's a semicolon, yeah.
It should be a semicolon?
It should be a semicolon.
That works for me, that's actually.
So we don't need to re-mention that it is not the purview of the HDRB right there and?
No, I think we said, so we.
We've already said it once, but.
Yeah.
Frank, what you wanna do is you wanna change the period at the end of the first sentence to a semicolon.
The end of the, okay, so that becomes a semicolon, is it?
Yeah.
So it's two semicolons in this.
You could put perform only by a professional.
And structural should be a lowercase then.
That's true.
Should we put only by a professional?
Perform, yes, or only performed or only by?
Either or.
Shall only be performed by a professional or should we, no, only by, I think it's better.
I, I, I think you got it with what you got there.
You don't think it only goes in a?
I think you're overdoing it, but if that's what you wanna do.
Well, it's clearer in terms of telling them they can't do it.
But the, the purpose of the code is not to tell the HDRB what they can and cannot do. The purpose of the code is, if, if we believe that the HDRB has, has been doing things improperly, that is up to us to talk to them about it, not stated in the, in the code like this.
We could take only out, because it's structural, any structural value which is gonna be performed by a professional, employed by the village. Period, that would exclude them, so.
Well, some people that were reading it might think the HDRB is the village. You know?
Yeah, that's.
If you didn't know any better. Cause they worked when they're one of our.
But only's not gonna clean that up.
No. Definitely not.
All right, so let's go up. I'm gonna go up and just get some of the comments. That's a nice and big map, please.
That's the chair, it's not me, I swear.
You sure now.
It's soup.
Okay.
Are we good, we're good with that?
I think so, Steve, your question, is this for the sake of future needs, okay. Sixty-four three, Steve had a comment.
What was the comment on, I think that Dave's, I mean, yeah, it is on what he's talking about.
So is that good, is that good to take it out and resolve?
What was it say?
You were, when I check on this, it's changed and enlarged. The boundaries of the district, oh, this is the change in the large, this is.
When they wanna change it.
Back to sixty-four three, the boundaries of the district may be changed or enlarged.
Yeah, and that's the first comment, so all right, we're cleaning up to that?
Yeah, we're cleaning up to that, mm-hmm. So, um, do we wanna take out?
I'm responding to someone else's comment on that, I think Dave has on hold or.
I like to, okay, this is Marie's comment, I'd like to discuss if the village feels the boundaries of the district should be enlarged. Okay, we started this discussion, um. I think taking out the word enlarged is gonna help us a bit, but not necessarily fully because it also says it can be changed. Which could mean anything, enlarged, shrunk or whatever.
But doesn't, the rest of the document, doesn't, or the rest of the chapter, doesn't it kind of really restrict how you can do that to a point where?
Yes, it's, I think it's called delineation? To expand the district boundaries? I think it's called delineation and, and it's, I think toward the end of the chapter. To expand the the district boundaries. I think it's called delineation and and it's, I think toward the end of the chapter, how that how that can be done.
Now, this is it upon the recommendation of the board, review and or planning board, and an amendment of this law by the mayor, so it's pretty much. Isn't gonna let them just expand or enlarge on their own. It goes through all kinds of process.
Have to go through a public hearing, have to go through.
Yeah.
We were discussing eliminating it.
Can we just take out the words enlarged?
Say changed.
Shall consist of the area designated on the map.
Yeah, I don't know why enlarged there, how well the boundaries may be changed, how ultimately it can make it smaller.
Maybe.
Eliminate it.
Um, should we take out enlarged? Yes, no, maybe?
Fine, I'll eliminate it.
Are you okay with that?
So what are your feelings on that, Marie? Cause you said you want to.
I I I'm, i- if you wanna leave it as it is, it's fine with me.
Okay.
I'd like to take it out.
I I brought that up when we.
Not enlarged, this the whole section, they're that old. Uh, I don't know, I'd probably. I could go either way on it. I I think it should be some future use, but I guess at that point.
Anybody else?
Why on a comment?
Oh, I I just think that section we should leave in. I commented, just leave it in. Enlarged, I don't care about. Changed could be bigger or smaller either way. So I think changed co- changed covers it.
Okay, there's a lot of comments down here. Someone on the historic comment, I thought, town boundaries, okay, right.
So I think you can resolve all those.
Okay, Steve, your last comment was, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so. We'll resolve this. So leaving the word enlarged in or taking it out?
Take it out.
Take it out.
Okay, delete or enlarge, that works. Okay, moving on. Uh, I added review board, now this had something to do with um. The definitions, Marie, I I wasn't sure. Shall be noticed because I added it review board in parentheses and we're sixty-four, four, A. Because that's the way it's referred to.
That's fine, that's fine.
Now, does it go in, does it go in quotes inside the parentheses or not?
Uh, uh, there, I I think what the way you've got it is fine.
It's fine, okay. All right. Uh. The original members of the review board, appointed by the mayor, blah blah blah, the members shall thereby appointed by the mayor with the approval of the board of trustees. Anybody o- anybody not okay with that? That's good. We're in um C. Okay, we are in sixty-four, four, I believe it is, yep. Sixty-four, four, E. The mayor and the approval of the board of tr- with with the approval of the board of trustees shall designate. Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Moving on, okay, doing good. Possibility of the village board having the right to final. Determination, okay, you, Dave, at the next part here, you were talking about um where we just were, I guess. The possibility of the village board having the right to final determination on the demolition of a building. I don't remember why, but I think it was said we have no right to stop a property owner from tearing something down if they have shown hardship.
I'm not seeing a.
I'm sorry, it's a con- it's a Steve comment, actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, it should be, it's near sixty-four, blah blah blah, five, A on the side, at least that's what it's popping up. It's not really connected to anything, but it should be the next comment in your list.
Yeah, it has to do with the hardship rules.
It's from Steve, it's uh, it says six twenty-four.
I think I'm responding to someone below, it's it's about the hardship, I don't know why I went there, but it's the most recent one.
Okay, so we're talking about.
As Dave says, unless, it's right below Dave's, this is in response to what Dave said.
Okay, so.
Unless I'm missing something, there's nothing in this section indicates.
Sorry, I just opened it up. Okay, Dave's comment from February twenty-seventh, unless I'm missing it, there's nothing in the section that gives H R B purview issue.
And then we, we already addressed that.
You know, in exterior, we took care of that. Also, I think something needs to be added stating whenever a demolition is requested, a licensed architect or engineer represents the village. Not, okay, are we okay with taking that out?
No.
Um.
Where are we, sorry, where are we taking that?
Sorry, your comment about the um purview of the H R B and whenever there's a demolition.
Right. Oh, yeah, you can resolve that.
Okay, so they can resolve that one, we took care of that.
Right, so what I said was. When we were, I thought we were talking there about, you know, who has the right to.
No, I think that's down farther.
It is, but I'm responding to.
As far as the hardship.
It's economic hardship.
Right. But when we were talking to them about tearing a building down, you know, last, whatever it was, a year ago or more. And we, w- we were talking to them about why they are allowed to to give permission for this building to be torn down. And when we were talking about, well, why can't, why, how come this can't go through the village board before we tear a building down or whatever? And they had said that. It's it's a New York State thing. It has really nothing to do with them either. They're just kind of slowing the process down with.
Because it's in the historic district. It's a New York State requirement.
Right.
If someone wants to tear down a building that's not in the historic district, they file a building permit for demolition.
No, no, I understand how it works.
Yep, right, so, but because, but if a building is in the historic district. Then the H R B is the review authority to say yes or no, you can tear down this building. Which has historic significance or contributes to the his- historic significance of this neighborhood.
Well, which is what they did there, but I knew for a fact there was nothing wrong with that building. It could easily have been fixed for way cheaper like they wrote than the cost to do all that.
Putting aside, so what you need to do there is take a look at the procedure that is supposed to be followed. When someone wants to tear down a building in an es- in the historic district, so um.
But they were saying at the time that they really have no control over it either. This person shows a, you can end up in court or whatever over it. But if this person has shown that they tried to do everything and the the building still isn't to their liking, or they have an engineer that says it's structurally unsound, they can tear it down and there's really not a lot to.
I I don't think that if if the building is not to their liking, I don't think they can tear it down if it's in the historic district.
Well, there was nothing wrong with the building and they did, so they could have added anything onto the back of it.
Put to, put to one side what happened there.
Okay, cool, that's all in.
And and look at what are the requirements.
Okay.
To to receive a certificate of economic hardship.
Yeah, we do um, is that, is a certificate of economic hardship is not the only reason why somebody tears down a building, right? Somebody could tear down a building because it's structurally unsound.
Right.
Because what?
It's structurally unsound.
As it turns out, there's nothing in our code about that.
See, I mean, it should be, I think. I mean, economic hardship to me is this, structurally unsound is this, they may not, you could be structurally unsound. Or you could, you know, or it could be sort of structurally sound, but you don't have the money to fix.
Right, a portion of it could be.
So it's, it's, so it's, to me, it's like not totally the same thing, um.
But Dave had a good point when he wrote, it was that it costs a lot more to tear things down and rebuild something that's five times larger.
Yeah, so I mean, that, I don't think she came in with an economic hardship for that building. I mean, I don't know.
It was a structural thing.
I think it was just, yeah, so it wasn't necessarily an economic hardship.
But it structurally was okay.
But that, but the H R B can only approve if it can be demonstrated that there is economic hardship.
So if it's structurally unsound, who approves?
I think they probably could have, if it was structurally, well, that probably would go to economic hardship, cause you'd have to fix it.
Yes.
Yeah, but not necessarily, you could be a billionaire. If you got a building that's structurally unsound, you can take it down.
But the.
So it doesn't have to be.
But the economic hardship is supposed to be based upon the value of the building. There are financial.
Right.
Um, elements, algorithms, that are supposed to be used to determine whether or not there is economic hardship.
Right, that I understand.
Which are really complicated.
Yeah. Yeah, we went through this when the, when they, when they talked to us.
Right, well, that's what I'm trying to get at is I think it's a, at the time, what they said was, it's not really up. They are operating the H R B on rules given to them by the state when, with this economic hardship thing and they have the. The ports they have to prove and then they're allowed to deem that this building indeed can be torn down. Yet they didn't even, that wasn't what they did there, it was a structural issue, so.
And I think we've.
And at the time, I was like, well, who's the structural expert that determines this? And they said, well, they hired an engineer. And I said, well, I've been doing this for twenty-five years. And there's nothing wrong with that building. I could have fixed it for ten percent of what you spent building this whole building, you know what I mean? So. Like, I just happened to know better and it happened anyway, so I'm I'm not trusting uh.
I think we, since we tightened up the engineer and the, you know, and ha- you know, the demolitions and having that.
Right, that would be, but what they said was that wouldn't matter. So if we had our own engineer that said, yeah, well, actually, it's fine, and their engineer said it wasn't. Then they move on to, they'll have to spend more money to do it, and then it's a financial hardship, then they tear it down. I don't understand.
But I think we could argue that's the, that economic hardship isn't true if you have an engineer that comes in there and says, struc- structurally, this will cost you ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, that's not an economic hardship, if you're gonna tear it down and rebuild a whole building.
All right, but my next point is every building on Main Street is like that. So every building in the historical district, you can find something that's structurally unsound about it, or or they're definitely not built to any modern structural codes or anything. So everything's suspect, so.
Structurally unsound.
So they don't exist in the same realm that an engineer operates in nowadays, cause these buildings aren't built the way things are built now. They're not even close. But they're still fine, cause they're still standing. A lot of them are sagging or whatever, but so basically, everything is is open for demolition.
Yeah, but I mean, if you get, if you get an engineer who knows historic buildings, which is what we're gonna need for something like that, it's not gonna be just any engineer, it's gonna be somebody who understands historic buildings, who's a certified engineer.
Yep, and if they say this is what can be done to fix it, and the people don't wanna do that, then they don't have to, which is the problem.
But the certificate of economic hardship says, uh, in order to prove economic hardship. The applicant must demonstrate with objectively verifiable data for an income-producing property, which is what that was. Which is operated or or offered in whole or in part for hire, lease or rent, which is what that was. That the denial of a cer- certificate of appropriateness will prevent the property owner from earning a reasonable return on investment. Regardless of whether that return represents the most profitable return possible. So as long as it can be made net neutral. Or positive, that's, that fits the bill. You don't get it.
What what section in Marie?
Sixty-four dash seventeen. Certificate of Economic Hardship Processing Criteria. For residential property, which is not that. In addition to the build subsection A, in the case of a proposed demolition, removal or relocation. The applicant must also establish that the property cannot continue to be used for its current function. Or be adapted for any other use, whether by the current owner or by a purchaser, which would result in a reasonable return. And reasonable efforts to find a purchaser interested in acquiring the property.
Seriously, I'm sorry, my my computer keeps jumping, I'm sorry, Marie.
In deciding to find such application for removal, relocation, or demolition, the review board may consider whether the owner has created its own hardship. Through waste and neglect, thereby permitting the property to fall into a serious state of disrepair. One could argue that. The previous owner had not been investing a reasonable amount of money in the maintenance of the property. And that when when it was offered for sale, and we remember that it was on the market for a year and a half to two years. When it was on the market, there was one potential owner, one potential purchaser. And they offered an amount and they were turned down. It was less than the original asking price. And then a second purchaser came along and offered the same amount of money, one and a half to two years later, that's my remembrance of the amount of time. The offer was accepted. So now, the new owner has this property. And the new new owner is saying that that the property. Cannot continue to be used for its for current function or be adapted for any other use. It could have been adapted for another use. So I think the question is, how did the decision get made? What were the objective? Numbers that were provided.
Right.
To the board to lead them or cause them to grant the certificate of economic hardship and permit the demolition?
So is, so that's, they gave them demolition on economic hardship?
I I don't know, I'm just, they.
I don't think so.
No, I'm just thinking maybe, maybe it wasn't an econo- maybe it was just because somebody told them it was structurally insecure, they had to take it down. It may not, it may have had nothing to do with economic hardship.
Yeah, they were counting on that from the moment they came in.
I I believe that they, well, let me see.
Karen Parks came in and started reviewing future buildings that she was gonna build there with us and there wasn't even permission to tear it down yet, is how it happened at the time. I remember she wasted like forty-five minutes of our meeting one time, showing us, would you like this drawing better or that drawing? And I said, well, nothing's proved, you can't even tear the building down yet, why are we looking at this? And one of those drawings she showed us is what got built, uh, later on, but. I don't think it was economic hardship for her, it was, they said it's structurally unsound, which, again, is every building on Main Street.
Yeah, I don't know. I think maybe the thing is to, to be, to address the board on that and that.
I believe it, I believe that.
Well, that was my suggestion, I'd like to get them in here and we could just talk about this uh in more detail, cause I don't remember, there was a reason, I made the same kind of points I was making just now. And she said, well, you can't do that, because you can't tell somebody they can't tell them to tear the building down. You can get in the way a little bit and make them have to jump through a few hoops about it, but when it comes right down to it.
I don't think that's true.
Uh, you can't stop somebody, because they will eventually prove economic hardship and that's the s- the state is saying, well, then according to these criteria, you may now. Remove this building, because you've proven it, and then you, the only way to fight it at that point is actually to go to court.
So it it sounds to me as if uh it would be to the benefit of us. To have members of the H R B explain or walk us through the process that they went through for one twenty-six Main Street.
Please know that'll go on forever. That'll go, that'll go on forever. Uh, you know, I mean, they they sat before us when they, when they redo it, when, then, bleh, sorry. It's been a long week already. They sat before us when they redid this whole chapter. Uh, they sat before us when the, when we argued about the other building. You know, in my thinking, like, rather than sort of determining it as Marie said, you know, what happened before, we need to write this for the way it's gonna be from now on.
Well, to do that, to do that, I think you need to understand how it failed.
Well, this one informed me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If if this failed, how did it fail?
What I'm looking at is, if, what Steve's saying is that they said this is the state law. They know where, did they reference anything in New York State law? I'm looking through this whole seventeen about economic. There's no reference to anything uh in New York State law, so if this is. If the economic hardship is based on something that they said, the criteria of the state.
There is some criteria, yeah.
They, they didn't reference it.
I don't think they made it up.
There is a criteria, sixty-four or seventeen is the criteria.
Right, but I, but I, they told, according to what Steve remembers, that the criteria they wrote here is based on something from New York State.
Right, and the board has no, the village board has no recompense.
It could be that New York State Office of Parks Recreation and whatever, whi- which is where the historic people go.
But they didn't reference anything about New York State saying this is, you know, based on such and such.
So how do you wanna go forward on this?
I'm gonna leave it open. Do we want, wanna hold this aside? Um.
Do we wanna bother? I do.
Well, if you're uncomfortable.
Well, it didn't turn out the way it seems that, the whole idea of protecting something failed. So if we wanna protect things, then we should look into it. If not, then uh people will spend enough money to get permission to tear a building down.
I think Marie's suggesting it'd be a good one. I think we should like, you know, have somebody come in, a rep from them and just say, how did that happen? And because I think they might have agreed to, agreed with the decision they made. It might not have been, oh, our backs are against, oh, we can't do anything, we agree with you.
They should have a file. There should be a file someplace here.
Let me see if I can find the uh, the meeting, or the H R B reached their decision uh on that and send the meeting minutes.
And they, they're, Jeff could probably pull the H R B file for that particular address. If it's not here, it would be downstairs, or it's already been scanned, in which case he can pull up the scan copy.
Like the thing that happened down at Market Sheet though, is that's why I wanted an engineer in there, cause they, their engineer made the determination and they let him go ahead with it, you know, the, you know. Not, not the main building, but when they, when they were working and then they came about this piece of it that they thought needed to be, which was the whole front foundation, I think, needed, and it was above ground. Needed to be, uh, they they determined it needed to be taken down and did it.
That one, that one, I I mean, on that one, as I remember, correct me if I'm wrong. That one, I, I mean, on that one, as I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a twenty-six page plan. And there was, listen to paragraph in the twenty-six page plan that talked about if they found this situation to exist, then they were going to demolish. Now, I, I say it is humanly impossible for an individual to read through a twenty-six page plan for a building such as that, and every other building that has similar voluminous plans, to look for that phrase and call it out and say, oh, wait a minute, you have to indicate in your building permit upfront that you planned, potentially planned to demolish. That, I think, is what's needed, is in the building permit upfront, there is a checkbox that says demolish maybe. But call it out.
Yeah, cause I think Greg missed that, right? Was it Greg or Bill? I forget who it was at the time. But they did miss the one thing, no.
Twenty-six pages for one building, and they were doing changes to multiple buildings.
And they were, and they were changing the plans every other.
Yeah, they did a lot of stuff in motion.
Should be, uh, I don't know, there should be something in here that says any demolition that wasn't called out in the building permit has to be approved by the.
Yeah, so, yeah, something to that effect. Now, does that come under HGRB or does that come under planning?
What's that?
Demolitions all come under HGRB?
No.
No.
Demolitions in a historic district come under HGRB.
So demolitions and planning would be the same. Cause I mean, this chapter, even though we did sort of review it, what, two years ago? It's, it's just sort of seems like it needs a lot more.
What's that?
No, this chapter seems, like, even though we did look at it two years ago, needs more looking at.
But I, I, I challenge this group to identify what more it needs.
I mean, I, I'll be honest with you, I haven't spent as much time on this chapter as I need to, and I do need to look.
Go stand in the, go sit in the corner.
Time out, time out today.
Alright, so let, we'll work on that, the demolition thing, and see if we can understand better how that happened, or how to prevent it, or which we, but, I mean, they should have been, they, they wrote this, they should have been, we don't want that to happen either, and it should have been in here, and it doesn't seem like.
Well, that's what they were saying, and at the time, I was annoyed or whatever, but I, I was talking to them about, and they were able to convince me that there really isn't any, they're doing the most they could do. There really were no more avenues to explore. And there was nothing the actual village board could do about any of it, because we don't have the power to tell somebody they, what they can and can't do with their property.
I think we definitely do.
If that's the case.
That way, something along those lines though, Dave, like, it was, you know.
But if that's the case, why do we have sixty-four dash seventeen that says, you're, I'm, I'm not arguing with you.
No, no, at the meeting, I'm like, well, why are we doing it?
I mean, this could have.
You're tearing down something that was fine.
Turned out really very bad if they had gone into that building and made a determination that the, that the owner did not like. The owner could have sued them and said, you're not authorized to do this, how dare you say I can't tear it down? You know, because they weren't authorized to do what they did. So it could have put us in jeopardy of being sued if it had not turned out the way the buyer at the time or the owner at the time wanted it to be. So it just sort of, you know, they overstepped their bounds, and I think we've cleaned a lot of that up.
Yeah, that can't happen again, with your little hard hat on. I mean, I guess they could be invited in to look at a building, right?
I mean, I, I have to say that for many people, they are very curious as to what the interior of the buildings look like, and so there's a, I'm sure there was an element of curiosity on the part of the HGRB to see what architectural, interior architecture elements might exist.
But seeing it and, and making, opening your mouth are two totally different.
But I mean, that was the first, that was the first floor, it wasn't in the basement.
Climbing through the crawl space.
So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna go through the files and see if I can find the HGRB minutes and materials that led to the decision on one twenty-six Main Street.
Okay.
Okay. The second thing is relative to the crop property with the, um, back building is relooking at the, um, at the building permit to see whether or not it has a demolition field.
Okay, yeah, I think, yeah, if it was on there and it said, you know, you have to stop work before moving it with any demolition that's not approved.
Yeah, now.
Substantial.
So let me, let me challenge that, let me come at it from a different point of view. So, um, Barcivik's house was demolished.
Yes.
Right. I'm assuming Richard, this is Richard Chase.
Is that historic district over there?
No, it is not. And we intend to, so it is not the historic district. That, that house was demolished, and then the garage was demolished. I'm guessing that Richard, um, filed a building permit to demolish both. It just gets approved. There was no, there was no need for it to go to the HGRB, but there was no, it doesn't come to the village board. The village board has no say on it. Okay, let me contrast that with Stanley White's house on, uh, Hamilton, that has been demolished. That was an architectural gen.
No doubt.
But it's gone. In its day, yes.
Which house, that's not the one that was all caved in?
That roof company, yeah.
Yeah, that's that one.
That's a really nice lot.
I'm, I'd bet you ten dollars that in the spring, they're gonna come with a subdivision request. That lot is a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty.
Is it really?
So they can easily put in two houses.
I mean, it looked from the outside, like, you know, if I, if I walked by it, which I did on a number of occasions, I'm like, that place just needs to be ripped out and torn down.
It was so overgrown too.
It was gorgeous.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you cut down.
Really neat house.
Beautiful. Now Stanley White is the architect who developed White Hill Place, hence.
Really, shame on him. I always wanted to become a rich man and take a wrecking ball to the house like your woman.
So there's no, there's no, so that's out of the historic district, people can just take down a house for the.
Well, I, my point was, there were, I've just given you three demolitions in the village in the last, um, couple of years, and not one of them came to the village board.
But they're not deemed significant?
No.
We're just talking about historic things.
One could argue that Stanley White's house was significant. It was archit- architecturally, it was a beautiful house, and it was his house. So it was a house of significance, because it was his house.
How would we have been able to have been the authority?
Put into the historic district.
There should have been, oh, yeah, right, not, not in my neighborhood.
But you can do, you can identify a certain building, and you don't have to have the whole area.
But who would have, who would have made that determination? Not the owner who lived there, who left the place rotted. And not the guy who was buying it, who wanted to rip it down. Is it a village call to say this is a historic building?
Well, it's a historic district review, could like, look at buildings and, and suggest, you know.
According to this, they can, right, that's part of the, expanding or, or, changing, not expanded.
My, my point is that three buildings were demolished, and none of them came before the village board.
Right, and one of them was in the historic district and did go from the HGRB.
No.
I'm sorry, you're missing the other.
The three, I, they were all outside of the HGRB.
Yeah, well, then that's, that's nothing we need to worry about.
And that's, you know, and, and within the purview of, of the HGRB, they should be sort of, you know, they're aware of everything else that goes on around here sometimes, but they missed a building that was, was really historic. I mean, I didn't realize how historic that building was. If it was built by the architect who built the whole street and named the street and stuff like that, I mean, there is, you know, there is history to that building. So they should have tagged it before, I guess, probably before the guy sold it, because once somebody buys it, he would have been like, not happy.
Actually, he didn't, it was, I believe it was foreclosed.
It was foreclosed.
Foreclosed, and it was for sale as is.
Right, and it was a sealed bid.
It was filled with mold.
Yeah, the basement had several feet of water in it.
She died from it.
Right, so that was their hardship on that one.
Wasn't there somebody living in there still?
Yeah, Andrew.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, uh, going back on this.
Big skylight.
I thought that was in the debate, okay. Going back on this chapter, there's a whole bunch of things that just need to be approved, I guess, um, some of them were the dates.
Well, the next thing was Lynn's thing, should be, should be approved tonight, I suppose.
Where, where, which, where is Lynn's thing? Where are we?
Lynn was on number four on their sixty-four dash five A, number.
I don't know, I missed it, there it is.
Four. Sixty-four dash five little A, then under big A, number four.
Yes, I know her other. Sixty-four five, I'm not finding where. I think this, this comment wound up moving to something else.
When you guys make comments, you have to sort of highlight something in the text.
Oh, I, oh, here it is, I did, I did, see that S is highlighted, under sixty-four.
Yeah, if you click on her thing, then something will come up, and it, there's a little.
Yeah, it's, it's under number four. Review proposed alterations to designated properties, approve or deny certificates pursuant to sections, blah, blah, blah.
That, that's good, Lynn. Reviewer, review proposed alterations to designated properties. There's a, a punctuation mark missing there.
Yeah, I, I would suggest a comma there, but also, my question was, should we, it just says approve or deny certificates pursuant to sections. Should we specify what certificates they are allowed to approve or deny in that section? I guess section sixty-four ten, sixty-four seventeen do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you answered your own question.
I did. But I, I also had some, yeah. Punctuation, so just put a comma after properties, I guess.
You and Illinois, you, comma. There we go. Okay, so, um, you're, okay, so we're good. Now, the, the previous comment was Steve's, I'm gonna leave that in for a while.
Yeah.
Okay, cause we haven't, okay, so let's see, I'm sorry, next down below. From my computer, that's not again.
Then we start getting into a bunch of craziness, fair enough.
Yeah, it, you know what, because it was, um, there were adjustments that didn't have years and dates in them, so.
Under sixty-four eleven, right?
I wasn't sure, I'll get back up here.
Four eleven D.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, where are we?
Sixty-four eleven D, I think's your, the first, next comment.
Sixty-four eleven.
I don't see that one.
And your comment was just X, replace XX with ten, replace five with twenty-two.
Sixty-four eleven, D is in dog?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't see that one.
Twenty-four.
I think it's, I think it's, uh, actually connected to.
It's under signage, sixty-four eleven.
Sixty-four eleven D is n- public notice requirements requested certificates.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see any comment there.
I don't see, I see, the comment I see is next to sixty-four thirteen.
Sixty-four.
Amended. You're saying, replace XX with ten, Dave?
Sixty-four thirteen.
Uh, what happened to mine? I just jumped.
Okay. Oh, that looks really weird.
I just, uh, it just.
As it turns out, whenever anybody scrolls up or down, my screen goes with you.
Yeah, I know, right, and that's what's driving me up.
That is really annoying.
Surprise.
The comments are, are gone now.
Okay, Marie, I'm just approving the years and the dates, don't you?
No, do not, no.
Okay.
Sixty-four, I'm sorry.
Fran, don't do that. Touch the damn thing, Fran.
So are we on thirteen?
We're on thirteen, yeah.
Sixty-four thirteen.
Okay, amended by, um.
Sixty-four thirteen.
Thirteen fees, and it said it's amended by blah, blah, blah.
Sixty-four thirteen. Okay, fees. Fees should have amended associated with it. If that entire section was amended on that date.
Right.
I don't believe that entire section was amended on that date. I believe that there was an amendment, sorry, A was amended on November thirteenth two thousand seven. B, sorry, the convention
Right.
is when there is a section ti- title, you put amended there if you've changed the whole section.
Right.
If you've changed a subsection, you only put amended associating, associating with the subsection that was amended.
Did on B, it was sort of added to the bottom. So, so what I may do is, um, just for the sake of, of getting the Xs and the Ys out of there, approve that and then just highlight that and say, check it, uh, if that's okay, the one at the top here, Marie.
I don't think there should be any amended at the top. I, I, that, oh, sorry, let me, I can quickly confirm. Uh, let me go to phase. Five. All chapters. I'll go to nerd. I may not have that.
Alright, so I'm gonna leave that one, as is, and for the time being, we'll move on.
I think we can remove that one at the discretion.
Actually, if we go E code, they were going, they're going to do a lot of this, and then go back to.
Sorry, that thing was really not clear what she said.
Yeah, and, and, um, I, because I've had a few discussions with her, I sort of understood a bit, but it, it needs more clarification. Cause they do go back to the state law, and every time you, you, every time you have filed something, they'll
Yes.
update their.
Which is going to be a significant amount of work.
But they, but they justify when they finish that everything is exactly correct.
For the price that we're paying them, I don't think so. I mean, they're saying that they're, they're gonna baseline the code in two thousand, no, in nineteen ninety-seven?
Something, and then, they're not gonna ba- I mean, they're going to look at that, and then they're gonna look at everything we're sending them, and connect to, okay, well, that's another.
What they're saying is they're gonna go to every single local law that the village filed with the Department of State from nineteen ninety-seven. And
And, and.
Here's hoping that the village clerks did in fact file.
I would venture to say if it's written in our code that, because I, I know Marie was very, very, you know, in line with it. Uh, and I'm pretty sure Jeff is, but I don't know, so we'll, so we will, we will discuss later, anyway. Um, so that amendments, for the time being, uh, I'll leave it until we, until we clear up whether or not it belongs there.
Uh, I'm sorry, and we entered the what?
I'm gonna leave it until you determine whether or not we should take it out of that top, cause you weren't sure, right, for sixty-four thirteen? The amended paragraph, do you wanna just take that out of there?
How do you, what does it say now?
It says amended ten twenty-two nineteen, El Localor, two zero one nine oh six oh two.
Okay, um, leave it, leave it as is, I don't, I don't agree with it.
Okay, so there's a question. Um, next thing we are at. Sixty-four thirteen B. Okay, I understand what you're saying, so that's that.
Somebody scrolled to the end, sixty-four thirteen.
Okay, sixty-four thirteen B, we're deleting at the discretion of the review board, consultants' fees.
Sixty-four, I'm sorry, Fran, I'm trying to get back, just, I had it, and somebody, somebody moved the cursor.
No, me, I would never do that, sorry. B, consultants' fees at the discretion of the review board applicants.
I'm sorry, I'm still not there, sixty-four thirteen. Sixty-four thirteen B, consultants.
So we're deleting at the discretion of the review board in the first sentence in B.
Why?
I don't know, you said, you said replace it with the words, with the letter A. Consultants' fees, that's your comment, Marie, from January. It says that delete, replace at the discretion of the review board with A. So consultants' fees, it should say applicants for certificate appropriateness, blah, 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 blah. Reimburse the village for all costs and expenses incurred for reviewing their applications, including the cost.
Sixty-four thirteen B, it has consultant fees and then crossed out for your.
Application, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, and that makes sense, because we're not, it's not at the discretion of the review board that they're gonna, they're gonna reimburse us, they have to reimburse us. So I'm fine with taking that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a choice.
And then A should definitely be there.
Yeah, and then add, um, as Dave says, in, any and all professional consultants included, but not limited to planners, engineers, architects, and attorneys.
Like Marie wanted to add.
Preservation consultants.
Okay, let me just see something.
It, it's the only chapter, and the only place where we would have a preservation consultant.
Preservations, okay.
Says we're not limited to professional consultants. I'm fine with putting it in there.
Any and all professional consultants, including but not limited to planners, engineers, architects, uh, prof- preservation consultants and attorneys.
You could say preservationist.
Preservationist?
Oh, preservation consultants is fine, thank you, Fran. Oh, preservation consultants is fine, thank you Fran.
Preservation. Preservation consultants has a bit of a more professional sound than just for observations.
So that's resolved, that's added, next. Add or other professionals, or, do we wanna add or other?
Take that out, you can take or others out of there.
Take it out. Okay, delete, preservation and planning consultants, why are we, why are we deleting here?
What's that?
Your comments.
Or other.
Here it says.
Cause we already said, not limited to, so you can get rid of or other.
But this, that's all it's saying, just do something, it's not, it's, you know, just added it. Uh, make crazy, other percent, okay, are we still okay?
I think after attorney should be a camaraderie and or some whatever, consult attorneys pursuant to.
Pursuant, yes.
Or take out, maybe it needs nothing, just.
Pursuant to.
Comma.
Comma.
Preservation consultants and a co- attorney's comma, pursuant to chapter fifty-seven, and then there should be a closing parentheses after expenses.
Attorney, attorney's comma.
Pursuant to chapter fifty-seven, and then there should be a closing parentheses after expenses.
Okay.
And the space between the comma and pursuant.
Gotcha, okay, I did that. Replace, okay.
Um, leave that.
Leave that as a question, so you double check that, okay, um, that's not, that's not, that's not, okay, this is the Zs and the Xs and the Ys, so.
Leave, leave the amended.
So then the whole next one's just because of the fee schedule thing, right, is that?
Yes.
And funds, so we can take all of that out?
Yes, it's been deleted, should have been deleted.
Delete the funds paid, blah, 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 okay, so all of this comes out, that comes out, applicants shall replace the funds, that's all, that's all unchanged to fifty-seven, right? The.
Mm-hmm.
Changes made by such consultants.
What?
Am I going too fast?
What do you, you read one, two, three, four, five, six?
Those are the paragraphs you said to take out because of check.
They're all due to escrow, escrow, have to do with escrow and paying, how you do it.
Yeah, and I'm just, why is there parentheses, one parentheses?
Becau- I can take those out, that's because we had.
When you delete, that's what's left over.
Yeah, that's because we had, I'll take them out in a second, they were like this, this, you know, headings of all of this junk. Okay, so now we're gonna do the applicants show, huh, okay, that's all, okay, so this stuff comes out. Ma, don't do that to me.
Like a little hammers.
Right. One more. Okay, next. Let me, let me pop up again, okay, now we're back to economic hardship, uh, which we're gonna hold for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Bless you.
Bless you.
I'm sorry, that was my coronavirus things.
Oh, that, that's okay, did you have a shot within the last ten years?
It's not cause it's not strep, we're okay, no strep to me.
No, I.
Go wash your hands, everybody, quick.
I've been on antibiotics for more than two days, so I'm not contagious.
Okay, um.
The doctor's office.
We're all, we're all being reviewed here, okay. Um, Steve has a comment here, I guess it belongs to this, right, this is escrow, I assume.
I'm, I'm not seeing a comment.
We are down to.
Number eight, um.
I don't know what section of that, it would be seventeen.
D eight, on, yeah, sixty-four seventeen, D eight.
D would be.
D.
D is in dog.
Doggy, let's not get into dogs.
Okay.
D eight.
Okay, uh, Steve, your comments, unless you highlight something in here and then make, and then, like, if you highlight and, uh, and then click on this little thing, then your comment will connect back.
That's demolition.
Well, my comment is on this, Dave's comment.
Okay, so then, then at that point, you could just hit this, and it will give you a line two.
Alright.
And you can reply to him right here, so you don't have to, okay, so now we're at the point where Dave says.
So what was the, what was Steve's?
I was just saying, should this escrowed by the, you, is what you wanna do, escrowed by already, or?
Steve's comment. Okay, should, this should be the village's engineer, licensed engineer or architect hired by the village, this is your comment, Dave.
Mm-hmm.
Go back to where we are. So your comment is on D eight, uh, listing of subject property, rising. This is part of also economic hardship, I would assume, right, so we wanna hold this whole section?
Yeah.
Pass it, okay, we're gonna pass it.
I don't understand what escrow means relative to determining whether or not there is economic hardship.
No, the, they, Dave wants to hire the engineer and all that, I was just wondering, is that something that the, we would be in their escrows or that?
Oh, 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 yes, yes.
So that word, does it have to be said there, or it doesn't even have to be said anymore, cause?
Yes. It doesn't have to be said here.
Yeah.
It's, but it, yes, it would, it would fall into that.
Okay, so these are the next couple of comments, Ed, uh, representing the village of Cold Spring, for the licensed engineer, do you wanna leave that, Ed? Uh, take that now or just hold this whole section?
I think we can change that.
We can take that, it's in number ten, it will be D ten. Report from licensed engineer or architect representing the village of Cold Spring, with experience in rehabilitation, okay, so we took that one.
Okay, so after the architect, yeah, you're gonna do a lot, yeah.
Get a space. Okay.
With experience in rehabilitation, comma.
Okay, does the village highlight someone that's a question? Estimated market value of the property, do we hire someone to do that, I don't know, we get a good estimated market value of the property.
See, if that was in there, if that was in there before, then that, I doubt that ever happened.
I, I can tell you, you go to, um, a, 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 a firm that is, that is skilled in doing that. Uh, we have paid, um, money for commercial, um, assessments. Yeah, I mean, you, you do that, that's what you, you have to do.
So that's where we are at this point, that's sort of the end of this chapter until we go back and do all the.
So, did you get, take out the, Steve's is resolved too, and, right?
Escrow.
Escrow had to do with, with your comments.
No, but it was answered.
No, that's, we're good.
Okay, alright, so I'll take that out.
Any services they, we need, they pay.
We need they pay, I like that, that should be our model, we need they pay.
That's right. Put that in there.
Works for us.
Thank you in advance.
And then report from licensed engineer, that can be, that's resolved, I think, right?
Your question that this should be the village's engineer or licensed engineer architect hired by the village, okay, you said representing the village of Cold Spring, that's good, does the village hire someone to do the evaluation? Um, estimated, okay, so do we wanna add number twelve, estimated market value of the property, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
How do we wanna word that?
I'm sorry, what are we looking for?
Uh, number twelve, it just says estimated market value, it doesn't say.
We have. So do we wanna say, um.
Of property.
My question was, do we hire someone to do the evaluation, or what's, who, who's comes up with the?
Base.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's.
Well, could that be provided by the realtor or whatever, too?
Not, not by the realtor who's marketing it.
No.
Right, and it would, you would go to a profe- professional evaluator, yes, yeah.
Yeah. Third party.
Yeah, it's kind of condition.
Conducted by, or, I don't know what the word is.
Determined by, independent.
Determined.
Determined by an independent real estate.
Assessor.
Assessor, yeah.
Well, not independent, because they're gonna be working for us.
That, yeah, that could be someone they use.
Right, okay, determined by.
Neutral.
No, no, I'll just.
It has to be a.
An assessor hired by the village.
Yes, representing the village of Cold Spring, which is the wording in the previous section, or change them both, to be hired by the village of Cold Spring.
Yeah.
Right, these are, right.
Let's go, get ready to house.
Oh, we don't fix that.
Okay.
It's a small spelling mistake there.
Assessor.
Representing, representing.
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 Like some southern dog.
Representing.
Yep.
You're representing.
Misfellow assesses, oh, oh, have a couple of assesses.
Now it's representing.
Oh, you.
Now it's representing.
You've got seven or eight Ss in assessor. And you're really, you have all bases covered, Frank.
One of the above.
My fingers ran out of space here, okay.
Okay, you got it.
Right, okay, it is eight fifty-one, so what else have we got here? So on this chapter, we need to just, go back up there.
I need to get some answers.
Okay, so. So next, when are we meeting next, never?
Uh, not, uh, three weeks, two weeks from tonight.
Dave's leaving this thing.
Two weeks from tonight, um, right, okay, so the twenty-fifth, we are.
The eighteenth.
Two weeks, to the, the eighteenth, no, not the eighteenth, three weeks from tonight, we, we pushed it because I'm gonna be away, Dave's gonna be away.
Right.
So we pushed it to the twenty-fifth, so it'll be the twenty-fifth, then we're going to maybe review sixty-four again?
Okay.
Finish this up review, one fourteen again, if we can get the swimming pool railing thing.
Right, yeah, I could put a note to myself, I'd, I'd, I'd drop the ball on that one, so.
Seventy-one licensing, we had started on that, so we could finish that. And then we go to, we've got ninety-three, ninety-seven, one oh four, one oh six, um, I have a, just a question for us to think about for a future time, um. The V and T chapter, which I think is one twenty-four, Marie?
Uh, might have to look.
Okay, anyway, the vehicles and traffic, couple of questions that are sort of no brainers, but we should think about it, there are no, there are limited no parking signs all over the village. Four hours, five hours, all kinds of different hours, so on Main Street it's four hours, I think it's nine to five. On the side streets, some, some of them say five hours, nine to five, some of them say five hours, four to five, some of them say four hours, four to, uh, not four to five, eight to five. So nine to five on some streets, eight to five on some streets, five hours, some of them four hours, nine to five.
Some of them are two hours.
Some of them are two hours, do we wanna be consistent, I mean, other than Main Street?
Consistency is a, is a mark of a small mind.
I know.
Isn't it what?
It's the mark of a small mind, I'm joking, I'm joking.
I'm trying to. I know, what can I tell you, um, so that's something to think of.
I was taking that as a compliment, I'm not consistent at all.
I, I think that the, the whole, I mean, this is a digression, but parking, this is all related to parking. And are we going to do anything about parking?
I mean, that, that whole chapter has a lot of stuff in it, and we haven't backed up.
No, just, I, I'm on, on the topic, are we going to do anything about parking?
There's not much we can do, we have, we have the ability to do permit parking, but we can't do it, cause we don't have the space, right?
Yes. Well, we, we haven't gone through and demonstrated.
So all of that nonsense.
The committee failed.
Pardon me?
The committee failed, right, I mean, they had a parking.
I wouldn't say they.
They were destined, it's a big problem.
The, we, I don't think we ever demonstrated that there are insufficient parking spaces on the streets in District number two, let me call it, to accommodate the number of people who have residences in District number two. So if we're not going to do that, if we're not going to do residential parking in District number two, that raises the question, should we do parking meters on Main Street?
Now we're getting too.
I think it's a cost prohibitive. The amount of money it would cost and the amount of, of car spaces that each, each, uh, meter would control.
Not if you, if you use a, like you see in the city, the pay station.
Yeah.
Put a pay station on, you put your license plate number in, put the thing on your window.
Yeah, that's what we would do, but you need, you need multiple pay stations.
Land peaks go.
Need one on every block.
Well, I mean, what would we need, four?
Oh, no, you, you need about eight to ten.
Now you need like. Eight, yeah.
On Main Street.
Yeah.
And the parking meter, the one that we, we bought, cost us ten thousand dollars, so that would cost us about a hundred thousand dollars.
And if you had one, say, was between Fair Street and Garden Street, you had to have, you have to have it somewhere where people aren't gonna walk two blocks, so if you have one there, how many parking spots are there from there?
Yeah.
Six?
I mean, I, you know, I think, I think.
Never paid for itself.
Then what happens in residence parking was?
I mean, then, you know, my thinking, I know we're, we're writing code at this point, and it's not gonna be set in stone, but why don't we just clean up the code that we have and think parking meters? If we get elected again, get them next time around, or maybe next year.
But, I mean, the, your, the, the question is, are we going to invest money in changing the signs that we currently have, so that they are consistent, which is the mark of a small mind.
Right. Right, yes, I understand that, and I appreciate it.
To be consistent, or should we just say, the heck with it, why do we have parking signs on side streets? Because it's not enforced, and just the heck with parking signs on side streets? And look instead at, should we put meters on Main Street from the red light to?
In the summer it would be enforced, if they have nickel.
From the red light to the rain truck, the train truck.
I mean, we, or we could just determine that we don't have parking limits on the side streets, I mean, people who live there, not, I, I live on High Street, so it's not an issue for me. But people who live on some of these small streets who now are arguing that the commuters have parking on the street, oh, hell would break loose.
That's always, that's always the case, that.
And it's because we don't have regulation.
We, no, it's not, it's not regulation, there's, there's no enforcement.
So, it's not enforcement, so the other question is.
And, and are we going to, are we going to put money into enforcement?
But there's no parking, there's no parking hours on Garden Street, is there?
Yes, there is, there's, they're parking.
And, and there's none on Church Street.
There's probably parking hours on Church Street too.
There's none, none on High Street, there's none on High Street.
Probably by the store there.
High Street is a, don't anybody touch High Street.
If we're gonna put, if we're gonna put signs on, on those, let's put them on High Street.
Okay. So that's okay, so that's one of the, and I think on, on whatever, whatever street that is, you know.
This is exactly why nothing happens with parking.
Well, no, I mean.
The parking thing is, if, if you wanted to put parking, you have, one of the things is when you start it and end it, because people will come in to go to work, and they have six or seven parking slots, they, they can pull in at eight o'clock.
They do every day.
Which is fine, and then, then they just didn't move it at twelve a little bit, and then they're good for the day.
But if you do, if you do meters, that would, they would be caught by that, not caught, but they would be, they would be, they would have to pay the metered fee to park.
Come back from the city to do that.
You mean meters on side streets?
No, I'm, I'm talking just Main Street, yeah, me, me, meters on Main.
But they, they're parking on side streets.
And then people will just park, then people will just park on side streets, yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not policing it now.
Yes, that, that's always an issue in this village, are we going to police the, the no parking?
No, not during the week.
So on the side streets.
Not during the week.
You know, if we did.
What if we just determined when we really need to?
Yeah, the people who live on the side streets, Stone Street is like the one I always, always comes to mind, because there are very few, uh, driveways there. Um, commuters will park there, and they'll stay there all day, you know, so if you don't want commuters to park, then you've gotta say, for me to buy it, or something like that, or a night, whatever it is.
But then you have to.
Or just say no commuter parking.
Then you have to enforce it, and people know that, you know, maybe once every six months, I'm gonna get a ticket, so screw it, it's, it's worth my while.
And, and those people who live on Stone Street will get ticketed.
Yeah, well, that's.
If we, if you enforce it, they will get ticketed.
Unless you have a permit.
Unless you have a permit, yeah.
Well, if you have a permit, we have to come up with the numbers and say, we can do permits, and we'll get back to.
Sticker.
Right, go back to the square one.
And then a lot of people that are living on the streets don't want that permit.
Yeah, and then.
And they wanna park, their friends and their kids can park there right now all day if they wanna do.
And then the people who live over the stores on Main Street, and Main Street's not a permit street, will be, will be stuck to where they're gonna park, they won't have a permit, they won't be able to park anyplace in the village, because they don't have a permit. So that's, alright, so, so, it, in the process of whether or not we're gonna do that, the other, the couple of other issues, one, one of them was, there's, there's a couple of streets in the village who have no parking on one side, that have like zero signs there, for example, Furnace Street, there's no parking on the east side, but there isn't a sign, on the west side, right?
Down the west side, no parking on the, no, 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 parking on the east side on Furnace Street.
But there's not. Not a sign all the way down, I think on Garden Street, there's no parking on one side of Garden, there's not a sign all the way down, so those, and then the other piece that I discussed, I started with you, I talked.
I would challenge some of the, be balls enough to park.
Well, no, you know what, people who live here, people who live here know that.
On the west side.
I agree, why do we need to put up no parking signs?
But, no, because people who don't live here have, will drive in, find the space, and they will park, and if they get a ticket.
Not, not on those streets, Fran.
Not on the side.
What, if they park on those streets, they block the traffic on the entire street, not gonna happen.
But, I know, but, yeah.
I mean, if Larry can show that people have done it, then I'm, I'm open to parking signs.
If they, if they get a ticket though, then they're gonna fight it in court, there is no sign there that says.
Okay, but has anybody ever done it?
They don't get rendered.
But that doesn't, okay.
What chapters are we reviewing before I?
One fourteen and sixty-four.
Wait, wait, one fourteen, yeah.
And then sixty-four.
Yeah, that's it?
And then seventy-one.
Seventy-one, yeah.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven.
One oh four and one oh six.
One fourteen.
One fourteen starts at the beginning.
Okay, this.
One oh four and one oh six, okay, one oh four, one oh six, sixty-four, one fourteen, seventy-two, seventy-six.
And a four. No, seventy-one, seventy-six.